Okay. Now, if you look.
Yeah. So, the building, that, uh, building.
No, sorry. Great, nobody did it for you. Go live there.
No, it's, it's not the seed building. It's the one between the seed buildings and the, uh, city hall.
And then right here, I'm sure that here, that's officially the panel spectrum for chip memory. Mm-hmm. I don't have to say.
We only get a conversation.
Okay, okay. Or anything.
It is.
I need to start at five.
Okay.
I need to start the, uh, when to start.
Wait.
Edit, make sure all change the name. You'll, you'll have to change it twice. I don't know why. Okay. Make sure even if you're changing five. Publish major kids category. Need to qualify it. Latest, we're gonna put it under video gathering. Major kids of the past. That's what this is about. Parents. All the kids. Kids. That's change dashboard. And now it's connected. There is gonna be a sixty second delay. So it takes a while. It's not gonna match sync in sync with what's happening right now with YouTube Live. There is just gonna be a one minute delay. Okay, and then this right here, this tab where it says ten dot one, that's six dot fifty-one. And this is where all the audio occurs. Sometimes we have had problems before where the podium microphone doesn't work. The way to do that is that you come over here on the left side versus matrix. Matrix. Yeah. It's there. You make sure that all of these are turned on green. Sometimes one we hear will be turned off like that. And sometimes you can't hear within the chamber, uh, the chambers. So the only way to set that is you press it to make it green. So everything's over here right now. And you go back to the mixer. And basically you leave this on. This isn't something that you normally adjust. And I think all the audio will be adjusted over here. At home. Council chambers, council audio. Make sure that all the metrics are turned up. And for the zoom, you turn it up just a little bit over here. But it needs to also turn up around here. This is the, uh, the level that controls, uh, when someone speaks through Zoom. That's how you control it for them to be heard. And then.
Would you need to edit the video?
Mm-hmm. Goes on. See, you see how it's, even though we edited it, it has the original one. You have to edit it one more time. Uh, four.
Now we have the, uh, the still.
Yes. Oh, there's one more. Okay. I missed the stop. No, I don't worry.
I know, uh.
Yes.
It's basically one slot.
Yeah.
How great, so we can only say sixty something.
Sixty something.
Yes, so. Do the part. She started, she hasn't said anything. Uh, somebody can help talk about this.
Is the speaker there?
Okay.
Keep listening, you know, if I give a quick answer.
Yes, the video's on, actually.
Oh. Manda.
No, there's no.
You have it up here. Okay, you can just either there in the laptop. We'll get it right back to you, which we do. What would like to do?
Okay. Right now. Manda.
You want to give her the, uh, you know?
Okay.
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 Okay, it's, uh, four thirty-two. And thank you much for being here. Uh, today's date is Monday, July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I'm calling this meeting to order. And Ms. Anna, would you please, um, establish quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Gerlach.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum. We have four, uh, in person and we have Ms. Gerlach on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our, our invocation will be led by Pastor Eliud. So please stand.
Lord, we thank you for this afternoon. We, we started our, our city council acknowledging that you're truly our king and lord over our city. And Father, the gospel means good news. And we pray that you would bring good news to the city of Mission. That somehow, some way, through troubled times and challenging times, Lord, that you would give our leaders, Lord, our mayor and our council, wisdom and knowledge and understanding of how to lead and how to take our city to a new level and a new season of prosperity and increase, Lord. I declare that you, Holy Spirit, that you would give them just insight and knowledge of how to truly steward what you have already given us, Lord. It's not about getting more, it's about stewarding, stewarding what you've given us. That through that, Lord, that you would increase and multiply in abundance all that you've given us already, whether it's finances, whether it's people, whether it's leadership, Lord. Lord, we ask you today, give us your heart for people to steward properly and wisely what's already in our hands, Lord. That it would multiply, that everything our leadership, Lord, puts our hands to do, Lord, that our city would be blessed, that truly would be a beacon, Lord, a light to our valley and to our state and truly to our nation, Lord. Lord, let your, let this prayer, Father, accomplish this because of the Holy Spirit that lives in us, Lord. We thank you for today, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Eliud, for being here with us today. Okay, next item are presentations. And the first one is a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Have part of my staff here with me. I don't think there'll be room for everybody. Pete Charles is recreation, Ritz Aquatics. Edward Paz with, um, his parks foreman, Pete Lopez, Yelena Pete is the parks manager, and J.C. Caveron, our park supervisor. Um, this proclamation reads, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives launched in July nineteen eighty-five, with this year marking the fortieth anniversary of as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the National Parks and Recreation Association designed the theme to this year's celebration as build together, play together, and we are building. Whereas Build Together and Play Together celebrates in many ways parks and recreation professionals across the country, foster a sense of belonging in their communities by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe and accessible places to build, to build meaningful connections. And whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Mission, Hidalgo County, and the state of Texas. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near our parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities, providing space for popular sports, hike and bike trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases communities' economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the traction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a safe place for children and adults alike to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Mission, do hereby proclaim July twenty twenty-five to be Parks and Rec, Mark Parks and Recreation Month in Mission, to encourage residents to come out and enjoy our parks and natural areas and take advantage of our summer programs and events provided by the Parks and Recreation Department. Proclaim on this day, the fourteenth day of July, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to approve that.
I got it. Thank you.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. To accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
And also have with me, uh, Tony Guerrero, our Parks Advisor and Chairman. But he's gonna be shy today. I don't know if he's.
Well, that's not like him.
But anyway, I appreciate all that Tony does. I'd also the board. Y'all made good recommendations for our board.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, we have a proclamation for you. Want to step up and take a picture?
Okay. Can they come with?
Can we get Tony up here? Can we fly?
But it's not the auto kid, right?
Freddie, big smiles. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, uh, Leadership Mission Project Presentation. And thank you all for being here. Appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Chrissy Gonzalez and I'm very proud to represent Leadership Mission as its president. For an incredible forty years, Leadership Mission has been a cornerstone of public service in our city. Our legacy is built on the passion of individuals dedicated to making Mission the place to live, work, play, and thrive. Just last week, our extraordinary Class Forty-One unveiled a communication board at Vanworth Park, a project designed to empower inclusivity and accessibility for people of all abilities throughout our community. Today, it is with immense pleasure. Today, it is with immense pleasure that we gather to announce a new project from Leadership Mission Class Forty. What started as a focused class project to benefit the Mission Animal Shelter has expanded into a significant joint effort, thanks to collaborations with Steven Cutzaros, Director of the Mission Health Department, Mario Gantu from Keep Mission Beautiful, Robert Cadena from the Upper Valley Art League, Brad Benson from Mission Parks and Rec., and contributions from Classes Thirty-nine and Forty. Their involvement has transformed this initiative into an impactful beautification project that will benefit not only the animal shelter, but all our residents. Here to share Class Forty's vision and the exciting details of this project is our project team leader, Nicole Gutierrez.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, how are you doing? We're trying to get the presentation up for you so we can give you guys some visuals today on some of the ideas that we have to present to you. My name's Nicole Gutierrez. As we find that presentation, I just kinda wanna talk about the value of Leadership Mission and how our class, Class Forty, and the previous class, and Class Forty-one, have really united together to bring a new air about this. One thing about our organization, and specifically Class Forty, was that we were bound by unity, and unity on two grounds. One was our love for the city of Mission, and the other one is our care for animals and our hearts for animals. So as we began our class project, lots of things went on the table, lots of things came off the table, and what always stuck was beautification of our city, as well as fostering some sort of care towards the animal shelter. And that came with a lot of groundwork. A lot of members that you see behind us spent their hours volunteering there, getting to know the various people, not just Steven, but the people that were there previously also, we love Steven though. And then of course, taking their children to volunteer, and even adopting their own fur babies from that location. So we'll go ahead and we'll get started with our proposal for you guys today. I just wanna elaborate that this is not just a Leadership Mission proposal, this is in collaboration with various organizations throughout the city, including Keep Mission Beautiful, the Upper Valley Art League, and the city of Mission Parks and Rec., as well as the Health Department. As we move on, our vision here that we present to you guys is threefold. We wanna go ahead and present the idea of bringing a mural onto the grounds, as well as providing some sort of landscaping with our budget, and even launching it with a community event. Our idea is to really create a space where our neighborhood, where our community will feel welcomed. As a previous shelter worker, sometimes it's intimidating to go in as a family. It can be loud for children, maybe your first time adoptee, so it can be rather intimidating to go in. So we wanna bring in as much engagement to our city and comfort, as well as just beautifying that area. As we began to discover and unfold this project, two things that we noticed, two challenges that we noticed were, one, the visibility from the road. We wanna go ahead and beautify that with some plants, really bring the eye into that sign, as well as painting the mural there on the west-facing facade of the warehouse. Now that is a big warehouse, so I will show you the rendering in just a second. Those are two challenges that we found with the animal shelter, and that's something that we wanna contribute as our class project. Our idea is to go ahead and look for, we have discovered a local artist who is willing to do this, very professional, has done work in the valley, City of McAllen, as well as across the lower valley. We wanna create something that is photo-worthy. We know that these days, nothing gets by if it's not Instagrammable, if there's not a hashtag, right? And our idea is to put the animal shelter on the map, and that's what we want to contribute to you all as Class Forty. And then of course, we wanna bring in the community, we wanna launch a celebration. This is something big for the animals there, and we wanna do that by inviting everyone else to collaborate, and we've already begun the groundwork for that. If you take a look here, this is the rendering of the building, this is the warehouse, this is the wall that is facing westward, it is approximately a thirty-by-seventy-foot wall. The idea here is to beautify with a rustic mural that highlights the flora and the fauna of our local area. This mural happens to be generated by AI, so just keep that in mind. Isn't it beautiful? It's amazing what AI can do. But the artist that we did, take a look at, came over, looked at the wall, he gave us a proposal based on that, with longevity of approximately ten years before touch-up. This again is the westward-facing wall, so we know that will assist with longevity of the mural, and of course, it's visible upon entrance, so you immediately get that interaction, that excitement from the visitors coming in. This next page is our projected timeline. If you take a look here, we've already begun groundwork from late June to mid-July. All these wonderful people up here, we have been meeting on a bi-weekly basis, just to talk about our ideas, get things going. Everybody's really dedicated, we're all willing to collaborate with anyone throughout the city. So we have finalized the project's scope, we are commissioning, we're in the process of commissioning a local artist, and then coordinating materials and site logistics. By mid-July and September, we'd like to see the prep work started on the lawn, and then installing landscape and signage, which seems as if it's ready to go. And then of course, coordinating with one another to promote this event. By October, we'd like to have the unveiling of that painting, as well as a community event, at an event called Pumpkins and Paws.
Oh, that's cute. Nice.
And like I mentioned before, I was a former, this is near to my heart, because I was a former shelter worker in the city of San Antonio, and what my mentor always told me was, the greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way it treats its animals. And that just always stuck with me. So when I think of our group and how big our hearts are, that's something that's so meaningful to our city, and we really do want to take this project and put it on the map, put the shelter on the map. So, I wanna thank you for your time, and I know you probably have some questions, so we'll open the floor to that.
Okay, do you, anyone have any questions? Tess?
Yeah, I'll meet with them individually. I thank you for all your dedication and hard work in coming up with something like this. You're right about the animals, and we need to work harder to get them homes, and with you all's help, I'm just really excited for what's to come.
Thank you.
So are we gonna do something with a sign?
Yes.
Did you show us something about that?
We were still working on that. Steven had promised a really great idea of having something rustic, that's more upscale.
But for the time being, we do have plants that are available.
Yes, so we're also, Class Thirty-nine and Class Forty-one are contributing funds as well. They're, oh, sorry.
They're very excited about the project, and since they have some funds, they've been doing ongoing fundraising. We look at this as a multi-phase project. Steven has an incredible vision for making the space a weekend destination for families, and we wanna help him make that vision come to life.
Okay, very good. When is your next meeting? Y'all are meeting bi-weekly, or by month, what you said?
Bi-weekly. I think we have the next one coming up. Do we have a date?
Yes, next week. Oh, actually, no. The following, because I'm gonna go up top. Yes, the following week, the weekend of the, the week of the twenty-eighth.
Okay, okay. Maybe you can just share the date and time and place?
Yes.
And maybe one of us can, could go.
Absolutely, we will.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good.
Thank you so much.
I got one more question. You mentioned something that Class Thirty-nine has some funds.
Yes.
So each class keeps their funding, or?
No, if class projects get stalled for whatever reason, the money has sat there in an interest-bearing account. So now that we have this project ongoing, they wanna contribute to that. Do you have any other follow-up questions, Mr. Plata?
So the unveil, sorry, so the unveiling of what we just had this past week was from what class?
That was Class Forty-one.
And you all are?
We're Class Forty. Yeah, our project got stalled, because we had started working with the RGV Humane Society Board to launch that project, and then, you know, once things shifted, we waited for that sixty-day period of transition to end, and Mr. Bettis was kind enough to share Steven's phone number, and the very same day, I met with Steven so that we could get this project rolling.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christie, 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 can you introduce your board?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
So we have our Vice President, Mr. Ante Longoria. Edith Ramon, board member. We have Candace Rodriguez, our historian, and we have Joe Trevino, who is our Sergeant at Arms.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for all you do.
George Flores.
And you two remember the class one, George Flores, and Otis Reneo, sorry.
Thank you, okay. All right, next item is a status report on our city parks.
Can I have as much time as they did?
No. We'll let you know.
You know, it's hard to go through even eight months' worth of projects in a short amount of time, but I'll do my best. I do thank you all for everything, for your support, your ideas, and your continued push to get things done. It's good to work with y'all.
Thank you.
At Estreland, when we made our tour a couple months back, one of the simple items that was quick to achieve, and that was we installed soccer goals over there. The soccer goals, they're pretty durable, but we have to do, we do have to replace them periodically. Vanworth Park, I worked with a girl, actually a young lady, she's a Boy Scout, and this is our Eagle Scout project, and we provided the foundation for her, and she built a little book loan station there. Okay, the next photo is the west side, actually it's the perimeter of Vanworth Pavilion. There are stubs out of the ground that are exposed that had electrical connections, and those were since removed. That was through participation with the Facilities Department and Parks Department. We recently took over the painting of the restroom, and this restroom is kinda cumbersome, there's quite a bit of fascia board that was rotten, and some of the soffit was rotten. You can see here, he's gotta get inside the small stalls there to work in and start taping up the restrooms around the stools. Here's a project where they're working on it, and there's a completed project. What we're doing now is taking measurements so we can re-roof the restroom. The Spanish tile looks pretty, but it doesn't color coordinate, so anyway, right recently, we've been doing restroom renovations, and we've been installing metal roofs on all of our restrooms.
Installing what? Sorry?
Metal roof, you say?
Metal roof, yes, sir.
Metal roofs.
They're easier to install, they're slightly more expensive, but you know, they're well within our budget. My guys are really, actually, I wouldn't wanna be up there, but it's kinda hot, but anyway, they do a pretty good job of putting the roofs together. This is where we currently stand with the pier. I know we had talked about replacing the pier, we've got two different, I have two different companies I've been working with, one wants to come in with concrete-type planks, and the other one is recycled plastic. I personally prefer the recycled plastic, if we're to go that route. Okay, here's our class project from Class Forty-one Leadership Mission. Benson Palm Community Park, we are working on, I know the city manager's been working with Teklot, they're looking at securing a loan for two-point-five, two-point-two-five million dollars to help renovate it. One of the simple things we did, we had, one of our basketball goals was recently lost, and we had to go out there and replace the basketball goal. I know one of the projects that we talked about was replacing the wind structures, so they're all the same color, and so we replaced four sunscreens out there recently. Okay, we installed the park signs, I know, and then very near future, city, the inspiration road's gonna be widened, but anyway, we've got pipes that were installed in underneath the sign, so whenever the time comes to widen, I know, it's right now, we're extended into the right-of-way, proposed right-of-way, but anyway, the signs were built where we can slight supports underneath them, pick them up and move them, and transplant them later. This is one of our restrooms we've completed. As we complete the restrooms, we'll be replacing the porcelain in there, okay? Once the restrooms are completed, painting, we've got, we're working on the second one right now, once the restrooms are through painted, we'll be able to go in and start painting the posts that support the shade structures above the bleachers and the ballfields. Virdwell Park, you know, these dividers for our restrooms, they have open cells on top, and we've, we've kinda sealed them off, but we didn't do a complete job, and then we went back to seal them off. People have lost their car keys in the walls, they've lost cellphones in the walls, but anyway, you know, we just, we quickly sealed it off earlier, but now we just made it a little bit more better-looking. Okay, when we go to replace and paint the restrooms, we're doing a turnkey project. You can see in the photo on the left, the wrought iron, supported wrought iron in the concrete pad has exploded with rust. Anyway, we've killed the rust, and we've resurfaced the sidewalk area there, and also repainting and replacing some of the wood for the partitions there. And there's our completed project. C D V Park, long awaited, I really gotta thank the support of the city and also the support of the public works. We completed, I guess, two weeks ago, they completed the new walking trail, and the first comment came in this morning when I was walking out of the city hall, one of the walkers out there came to Parks Department to thank me, but she missed me, so accidentally, we bumped into each other over here, and she puts that the trail walkers feel like they're floating, when they're walking on the trail.
That's nice.
Okay, but anyway, you can see the before picture and the after picture. The next project that we're working on will be partnering, I'm trusting we'll be partnering with CDVG, we'll be installing solar lighting. We've had since tweaked this design out, but the blue lights show a low hue, and the red lights shows a more intense hue of the lighting there. But anyway, they thought we were working within the budget, of course, we're always working within the budget, but anyway, where the shade trees are at, we're gonna have to trim the trees up, they thought they couldn't get underneath them, but the way oak trees grow, we'll be able to shape the oak trees where we can get lighting, so you have one-hundred percent lighting on the entire trail. And in Sendetto Park, we've been trying to tweak out both in Sendetto Park and Los Nogales Park, the playground has been painted, we still have to paint some of the red railings out there. We've replaced three picnic tables, and also we replaced one trashcan out there. The brick columns that support the shade structure above the picnic tables, we've had just breakage, I don't know how they're breaking, but anyway, we've replaced quite a bit of brick out there. Los Nogales, we replaced the swing sets, and also we installed three aluminum picnic tables out there, and also painted the structure. That Mission Hiking Bike Trail, we installed a new hike and bike sign out there, and if they wanna do a sign like that at the animal shelter, we've had to build that for them also. This past two weeks, Jesús Fratui Mendiola is one of our Parks Board members, he helps generate crews who go out there and help weed eat the trails, and anyway, they did extensive weed eating, we finished that, well, actually, we still have a little bit more, but we did the perimeters this past weekend, and also we have a little bit more trail to complete, but this week we'll finish reeding all the trails. J.C. Park, this was the hardest structure, it's so high and it's so steep, and I got, my guys do not wanna climb up there, but with the use of the bucket truck, we were able to replace the roofing up there. This is one of the oldest structures we have, and for our restroom, this is a restroom combined with concession stand, but anyway, a lot of the wood and the trusses had to be replaced, the fascia had to be replaced, and the soffits. La Lomita, La Lomita was, I guess, our worst restroom, we had a small hole that developed and it continued to rot, but anyway, we replaced that earlier this year. Laurel Hill, I just wanna show you guys what happens at Laurel Hill, San Jose, and Catholic Cemeteries. If you look, this is, you can see the mower in the bottom photo there, and the guys that maintain this area do have a lot of obstacles, and you know, we try our best to keep it maintained, and anyway, we've got pretty skilled mowers. We have a smaller mower to fit between all the monuments out there, and we've got a couple weed guys on the weed eaters out there. But there's between the trees and the monuments and the flowers and everything, this is pretty hard to weed eat everything. This project here, actually, that site there is Warren and Dorothy Suter. We received a call a while back that how horrible it looked, but it wasn't our horrible miss, lack of maintenance, it was just the brick on the, on the above-ground monument was all black and tarnished with algae, but anyway, Chuck came down and cleaned it up, but while he was there, he asked me if he could assist, because the small stone you see on the right, Mr. Suter was posthumously awarded by the Navy Department, and so we helped him move it over and balance it out to where it should. it over and balance it out to where it should be. We do have to, we do have other projects where we go out there and mount up, level up the monuments. This is the San Jose, actually, the one on the right is Catholic Cemetery, the one on the left is San Jose, and also the one on the lower left is the San Jose, but then again, you see our mower. He mows as much as he can, just to alleviate weed eating, but anyways, it's pretty tough to go out there.
Brad, I have a question. Sorry for the interruption. Do we have a different crew that does the cemeteries?
We've got one crew, but we doubled up this past week. Actually, we had 24 men out working this past weekend because of recent rains. Rains are glorious, they come with organic nitrogen and all that, but this past weekend we had 24 men working, we had six men, five men at San Jose and Catholic Cemeteries, and we had four men working, two mowers and three weed eaters on each one. Lyons Park, one of the objects that was omitted during design was the basketball goals, but anyway, so we went in, we had cut holes into the concrete, and we installed the basketball goals on that project. All the picnic tables, my guys really enjoy making these picnic tables, I'd rather find something else to find my enjoyment in, but all the picnic tables out there were constructed by our men. Here's the finished product for our park sign. And Nail Toll Park, this, the only slide I'll show you on this one is the completion, the re-roofing and painting of the restroom. This restroom will also be painted blue, blue and white. Okay, our park signage, one of the things y'all had asked, if we post two signs out there for No Dogs Allowed, people still tend to walk by them, and I've asked them, they need to take their dog out, they're obliging. Also, we've got, all the restrooms have this, please help keep our restrooms clean, and the cleaning seems to be a little bit better now, and we're, they're being a little bit more cooperative, but we mounted the signs at a very visible point, you walk inside the door, and there's a please help keep our restrooms clean. Ruben Henoza Park, now, this is the toughest project we took on this year. We removed an unused playground set at Ruben Henoza, I mean, yeah, Jose M. Lopez Park, that was, that was in the middle of the park area, and the only use that playground got was people sleeping underneath it, and so it was difficult, but we were managed, we were able to manage it out, we did it, transported it and moved it over to Ruben Henoza Park. I mean, the pea gravel, the saffol material was really thick, probably about three or four feet, feet thick, I mean, three feet deep with pea gravel, so we've picked up all the pea gravel and moved it out to the water department so they can use it whenever they're making repairs. Here's, we're setting some of the playscapes and playpieces in position. We had to get in, and we couldn't get a concrete truck in there, so we mixed, and we've recently purchased a larger concrete mixer so we can mix concrete on site, and so every, every bit of concrete was pulled with the wheelbarrow. Here, they provided a concrete perimeter boarding to keep the grass out and the saffol material in place. Here, our guys are putting in landscape fabric to keep the weeds and keep the saffol material from penetrating through. This is the, one of our first parks that we have installed, okay, this is, we, the soil down there retains a lot of moisture, but we sloped all the grounds to where it goes to the middle, and we've got a big pipe there to where we can use a sun pump to pull it out, pull the moisture out. Also, we've since discovered that, you know, a lot of our playscapes are old, and they're turning white. Somebody had red on it to where you can add heat to it, but if you're familiar from the ranch, we used a pear burner, and so we're burning, you can see the middle picture, how white the chute is, and how nice and green and more brilliant the first sleeve is above that, but we're starting now to where some of our older playscapes, we're burning off the old graffiti and really brightening up some of the playscapes.
So once you burn it, it changes colors to green?
It's, it kind of melts, it remelt, it's difficult, because I know there's a couple areas on that playscape, in fact, the interior of the middle one, it's got a thinner plastic, I don't know if it was manufactured thin or if it was just worn out, but when we were heating that one up, it started buckling, so we had to go back in and get gloves so we could push it back into shape, but yeah, it's, it's...
Mayor, I have two comments before we keep going. I'd like to see Brad work with our media department to promote this.
Okay.
Not just that we have now this new park so that the neighborhoods can know, but also the employees, I think they're very dedicated in renovating our parks, and I think the public needs to know that. And then I'm sure it's going to be more slides coming, but what happened when you moved this playscape out, what took place there?
We're just leveling it out, there's, you know...
So now it's...
It's a shame, because that park, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
I didn't, you know, I felt bad, because, you know, that park is dedicated to a soldier that gave the ultimate price, and the park is one of our worst parks, because of people that don't need to be there. I know, I've been out there, it's easy, it's a nice park to be with during the middle of the day, but when the evening comes and the sun starts setting, you know, there's alcohol and drugs that goes on out there.
So I, I think that, for that reason, I think that park is very important to our community, and so I think that's something that the mayor and the City Council need to meet in a future workshop to discuss what we want to replace this playscape there.
Okay. I know years back, we were asked just to remove the tennis courts. The tennis court is there, but we moved all the fencing, we still have a basketball court, and we see people go out and shoot hoop in the afternoons, but that's the middle part of the park that's about all it gets used for. But we do need to do a study on that. Thank you, a good suggestion. This is, we installed sprinkler systems. When the school district installed the track at Ruben Henoza, the existing sprinkler system was destroyed, but anyway, we've got a temporary system put in just around the perimeter of this playground. That's what it looks like the day we completed, and this is what it is looking like now. Okay, we use five-bar, it's a reconstructed, desplintered bark. I don't know how you get the splinters out of bark, but anyway, it's a different, you know, a lot of, that's the most popular, but the next one we're doing, I found, since found a rubber mulch, not nuggets, but a mulch, kind of like the bark mulch. Okay, Simron, I was asked to go out and help clean up the restrooms there. We cleaned the floors, we painted the walls, and inside and out, we painted the door black, and there's, on your left, you see the before, and on the right, you see the after picture. Spirit Memorial Library, this is a fun project, and I know they're still working on it, but we, on the southwest side of the wall, we started a sidewalk there, it's all ADA accessible, so they can exit the northwest door and come around to the garden. Here, they're finishing it off, but anyway, there's the garden, sits on the north side of the middle of the library. On the right photo is a picture of the garden, and anyway, there's, as our funding comes through, and as our ideas keep on flourishing, they'll be making a nice seating area where they have plants and stuff they can maintain. Lulu has a green thumb, and she's really looking forward to completing the project. The Connectivity Trail, we've got two projects coming up, and one, it's long in coming, we were awarded the grant, we started the grant in 2018, we're awarded in 2020, but we'll be reconstructing the hiking bike trail and the connectivity trail. There's a picture, it comes in two segments, segment one is from Conway to Los Ebonos Road, segment two is from Bryan Road to Taylor Road, and Taylor connects to McAllen, and McAllen will take it forward. They've already started, we're redesigning, or we're trying to schedule a groundbreaking for segment one, but they're working out details with the contractor that's been chosen. Segment two is already started, the sign is on Bryan Road on the east side, that's the big tunnels that are already existing, each one of the roads, Bryan, Conway, Bryan, and Sherry have tunnels go underneath them. Taylor, I mean, Sherry's a little bit prettier, but they're taking out a lot of soil, and they're putting it on top, and they're coming back, setting it back in place, and layering it, so every two inches gets compacted. So anyway, the trails will come out, out of the tunnels and up on top, but it's really, this is, these pictures we're taking this past week. This is Sherry Road right here, you can see where he's layering the, the road grader will take it smooth out that soil that's already taken out, and then they've got a big sheep's foot compactor coming behind him. This is the west side of Sherry Road, there's a lot going on out there, in case y'all haven't been out there, but anyway, they've got probably about a quarter mile, the whole project is 4.5 miles, but they've got about a quarter, a little bit more than a quarter mile, there's an eighth of a mile that has concrete, and then you can see the, the structure's already in place, all the rebar and borders are in place for the next phase, they'll be pouring that this week. On the left side of the picture, where you can see the, like a road has been made, that's where the trail is, that's where the trail will be at, and if you look at the right side of that picture, way down on the bottom, that's where the existing pilot channel is at, and anyway, so they've, they've left ample room, so when Hidal County comes back in, they'll be dredging that down, so it'll be serving as a detention and a drainage ditch area, and that's all we have.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Why are we doing a Banworth Park?
Okay, and regarding, that's a big question, because we've got things going on.
With the lake and all of that.
Okay, we removed more ducks, Health Department's been helping me with that, and, you know, I've sat down again to try to complete, it's a lengthy project to ask for, to get the approval to, from the federal government, they're federally protected ducks, but we can transport and relocate the domestic duck, and right now, there's about eight more domestic ducks that we need to go out and collect.
Eight?
Eight more. But we still have the Muscovis and the Canadian geese. The Canadian geese are the more aggressive ones. There's also a family of ducks that's over, they like to hang out at the auditorium, but there was about 10 ducks over there that we were able to capture and move over.
What about the turtles?
That, I haven't found any information on that one. There's 11 species of turtle inside the...
So I've noticed, driving by, that you all have already done some work on removing the walkway.
Yes, ma'am.
When are we going to remove it totally? Is it going to be removed totally?
That's when I have written approval or go-ahead from the council, yes, I'll move forward, that's what the council decides to do, but one thing to bear in mind, I did talk to Texas Parks and Wildlife, and they said that, yes, that was part of the grant, and they're restricted with what we can and can't remove. They said it's kind of in a gray area, but they would look at it, and it looks like they might be giving approval if y'all decide to go that route, but the drainage goes into the lake, the drainage from the park empties into the lake, so that would be another...
I think we've already given a directive to our City Manager, Mr. Pettis, so he'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
We just, right now, it looks like a nice hor, and so having the walkway half-removed and half-not, I have constituents calling, asking what's happening, and so I want to make sure that our public, we want to beautify that area, and so we'll see, and I understand the Texas Wildlife and all that, of course, we don't want to hurt any animals or any ducks, but we need to figure out what we're going to do there.
Okay, I understand.
We're moving in that direction.
Yes. Thank you, Brad.
We're going to get, take care of the animals first.
Okay.
Well, then, I would recommend a sign, because people are passing by and walking by, and so we need to inform...
Okay.
Because not everybody knows our phone numbers, and they don't call the city, so at least letting them know this is an upcoming project, and, you know...
We'll do that, it's a great idea. We'll do that.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a report from our Economic Development Corporation.
Mayor, City Council, Technica Garcia, CEO of the Mission Economic Development Corporation. I have a little PowerPoint to kind of talk through, kind of let you know what we've been up to lately, and we can start that whenever possible.
That's not it, but I can start.
I mean, I wish I was somewhere like that.
Good, thank you. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Just to give you a little, good update on Ruby Red Ventures, the competition. This is something that we have started two years ago, this is our second class of competitors, and as you can see, it was based on the, something that actually we started a long time ago, but we revived it. The competition with Entrepreneurs here in Mission, they go through a six-week course with UTRGV, right, on learning skills as an entrepreneur, and how to build a business, and develop a business plan, and et cetera, and this year, these are our three winners, obviously all from Mission, that were awarded 15,000, 25,000 for first place, 15,000, and 10,000, this was put together by the EDC and a panel of judges to pick the winners, and this year, as you can see, those are the winners that we had. Consuelo Behavioral Health Services was first place, located on 495 here in Mission, second place was Pet Lover's Petsalmon, run by, I think the gentleman is, is he 18, or how? The third-place winner, sorry. And then, and then the patisserie by him, he's the young man on the right-hand side, and so, we're very proud of the winners, this is part of our dedication to small businesses in Mission, and one of the four programs that we have for small businesses, they're really excited, hopefully, you know, they'll have some success, and we'll keep a track, we keep track on them as they move forward with their, with their winnings and their impact on the city. Okay? The Downtown Assistance Program, which we started last year, provides $25,000 to six downtown businesses located along the Conway Corridor. You can be located on Conway or one block east or west of Conway, from First, I think, through 16th Street, or 18th, 16th, 18th Street, and last year, it was a profound impact on a lot of businesses that were able to use that money, instead of it being just a facade program, which we had in the past, these businesses can use their funding for new roofs, equipment, working capital, et cetera, and they've done that, and it's really, really amazing, some of the differences to these buildings that are located in Mission. So we had six awardings last year, and we'll have six more this year, and we hope to keep the program going until we have enough businesses impacted positively, and then maybe we can change the scope of it, but right now, we're focused on downtown, and we look forward to getting applicants in for the entire month of August, and I think the deadline would be September 2nd, the Tuesday after Labor Day for that, so we're looking forward to doing that again.
Mayor, I have a question, can I ask that, Lou? Off-subject. I really like how that looks, the butterfly with Mission in the middle. How did you all decide to go with the butterfly and not the orange theme? Because you know how we have La Lomita, the orange, the butterfly?
Yeah.
For this particular project, like, I know that you all have people that you talk to, and you're marketing.
We kind of struggled with that idea, like, hey, what kind of logo do we do, and we want to do something different, and, you know, the butterfly is also part of Mission, and I think Brianna and Belen came up with that idea, and put it on paper, and it looked really good, and we just went with it.
Yeah, girls, y'all did a great job.
Not a ton of science to it, but...
Maybe you can put an orange somewhere there, I don't know. It's pretty. I was just curious about that, if it, if they had, maybe tying it in with some significance, because, I mean, if you really do downtown, I mean, it goes all the way that, and then you can go to the butterfly park.
Yeah, we were a little bit inspired also by the butterflies around the city, and that was another thing for us, so we're good there.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. We're going to show you a quick video.
If you are an STC student and a Mission resident, the MIDA scholarship could be just as unique to continue your studies. We're talking $800 per semester. Yes, that's up to $3,200 towards your education. There are a few requirements, like already having at least six credit hours and enrolling in at least six more.
I love tennis so much, and I always wanted to share that commitment with my students, no matter what ages they are. I was struggling to get financial aid. When I received the MIDA scholarship, everything suddenly felt possible again. My future was back on track, I was able to complete my education at STC, graduate, and move on to the next step in my career.
At the Mission EDC, we're proud to invest in our community, because when you succeed, Mission thrives. That's why we've already awarded the MIDA scholarship to over 1,000 students who want to obtain a degree, a certification, or specialized training. The application is short and fully online, so apply today. Don't wait, the deadline to apply each year is your life 31st. Get your boss enough scholarships so you can hunt down a career with more bite.
This is, our team did a really good job with STC to put this video together, really just to... uh, really just to encourage people to apply for the Mission, for the MEDA scholarship, which is about $800 and tw, up to $800 in tuition.
Per semester.
Yeah, to, to South Texas College. And, uh, we're, they're a great partner, they're, they're in our building, they offer classes there, but obviously, they have a great campus, not even five miles away, and sort of like your home, uh, home college, uh, for us. So, but we're happy to keep this going. We've have, had over 1,000, um, folks over the years, but I think we're in our 11th year. Uh, here's, the numbers are up here. Uh, more than 1,000 scholars to date. Uh, I think that with this year, we'll probably be close to $2 million that we've, uh, awarded in scholarships. Obviously, there's several, um, uh, requirements, but, uh, the last three years especially, once we started putting some funds toward the marketing of this program, it's received a lot of applicants. So, uh, we're talking about 300 or plus more per semester, and so we're really happy with that. And, uh, it's really just something that Mission residents can take advantage of, and it's right there, uh, you know, for them to, for them to take. So, again, very short deadline here, but we've been pushing it all summer, so as STC, July 31st is the deadline, uh, for this program. Okay, I think we'll go to the next one.
Could you send the video? Or you have it on your Instagram or no?
We have it on our Facebook, at the Hall of Fame.
Okay, I only have that. And can you email it to me so I can post it? Thank you. And they can take my class, by the way. I'm a professor there.
Yeah, no, uh, that's, that's a, that's a good thing. There's a lot of great classes they can take, even for folks who are looking to get a GED or, or, uh, some other programs, this applies toward, toward their, their costs, so.
And would this program also up with a GED or no?
The way STC has explained it to me, they can apply this toward the tuition for those programs.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, a couple other things real quick, and we can, uh, wrap up. I was invited to have a pa, uh, host a panel and, and speak at the Beyond the Borders Conference in, um, in Mexico City, where I represented Mission at the Mission, and the Mission EDC at this conference that was focused on trade and immigration. Um, I think the day after we left the conference last week, of course, it was announced that the 30% increase in, in, in trade would, uh, would impact, um, uh, goods from Mexico, so it was very timely. Uh, was able to chop it up with a lot of, uh, professionals and leaders from the trade and, and government in the US and Mexico. I was able to talk to, uh, former ambassador, um, to the, to Mexico from the US, Tony Garson, was there?
Tony Garson.
Right, Tony was there. I got to speak to him for a little bit. The guy to my left is, uh, is Alfredo Cocharlo. He is a former Dallas Morning News, um, reporter that covered the Fox win way back in the day, um, and, uh, and an author of several books. But we were able to kind of also talk to some folks and leaders in Texas about how important trade is. It's not just important to the folks along the border, but it's, you know, super important to people in DFW, Houston, San Antonio, and those areas that benefit from trade. So, we'll see how it goes forward, but it was a great opportunity to talk about Mission in the Valley and from the audience in Mexico City. This, this is a really neat award that, um, that we were able to get from the RGV Partnership, which we support wholeheartedly. As it was the first one, obviously, it says inaugural 2025 Leadership Excellence Award. Uh, we have, uh, supported the RGV Partnership Leadership, um, program that they have, in addition to, we've had several of our team members go through the program, and I want to thank, uh, Deborah Cordoba, our board member, for, and Estella Sines for helping, uh, coordinate that. I want to thank Belen, uh, for also for, for helping there. But this is a great, the leadership program is a really good valley-wide, uh, program that, again, we really like. I, I think I worked with Deborah and, and Huldan Albedes, another board member of ours, way back in the day to help set it up. And so, uh, this is a good thing, and we're super proud to, to, to get this, uh, designation from the partnership. I think that is what, well, that's all we have, right? So, Mayor, uh, Mike, City Council, thank you for, uh, for, uh, for your time and your support, and, uh, we'll, we'll come back next month with some more news.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is our departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Are there any questions? There's a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up and signed? No? Okay. The next item is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Was anything filed?
We have, there are a few things on, um, executive session items to be prepared at the seminar.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public hearing, and I believe we only have one item for public hearing? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Um, item number seven is a public hearing on the proposed CDBG substantial amendment for FY 2425 funds. The city of Mission receives federal funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Community Development Block Grant Program. The city's 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan and FY 2425 Annual Action Plan was approved by City Council for submittal to HUD and was subsequently approved by HUD. In accordance with 24 CFR 91.105 and the city's citizen participation plan, the city is allowed to make substantial amendments to its consolidated plan and/or the annual action plan. The substantial amendment for the FY 24 Annual Action Plan consists of reprogramming $60,783.79 from the FY 2324 surplus in CDBG funding from Housing Assistance Program to the FY 2425 CDBG General Program Administration and Public Infrastructure Improvement Projects as follows. Uh, of that total amount, $40,000 would go to Public Works Sewer Manhole Improvement Projects. $1,566.11 would go to Public Works Astroland Storm Sewer Improvements Design Phase One Project, and $1,217.68 would go to CDBG Administration. In accordance with the citizen participation plan, the Citizens Advisory Committee made the recommendations for the approval of the substantial amendment during the meeting held on June 2nd. A notice of public hearing was published in the Progress Times on June 6th, which announced two public hearings and a 30-day comment period to solicit input on the proposed amendments. The purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment on the recommended substantial amendment funding allocations. All comments received will be attached to the substantial amendment and, uh, for submission to HUD. Uh, Mayor, this is just a, uh, public hearing at this time. There is an action item later on, number 24, um, requesting, uh, approval of the substantial amendment, but at this time, it's a public hearing.
Okay. So, it being a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the amendment? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No? Okay. And that will close the public hearing, and we will move on to, well, there are no items under planning and zoning recommendations, so the next item is Consent Agenda, and those are items eight through 18.
Mayor and City Council, item number 18 will be removed at this point for a later, later agenda item, just remove it from the agenda. Thank you.
You're, we're removing it from the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we need an action on that to remove the item?
You can remove it to the, um, regular agenda and then take no actions or deny it.
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Let's, uh, move it to the regular agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Is that okay? So we're pulling number 18.
I want to approve the agenda items, number, number eight, approval of minutes. Number nine, unauthorized second minutes. Number 10, authorization to collect a 2nd year of renewal. Number 11, approval of ordinance number.
5673.
Number 12, authorization to purchase traffic cameras from 25 years. Number 13, ratification on the Texas Department of Budget. Number 14, authorization to submit grant application to the Walmart Foundation. Number 15, solar reservation number.
1993.
Suspended the August 19th, effective debt services. Number 16, authorization to solicit, solicit qualification for rent or maintenance services. Number 17, authorization of purchases from state car security buyers, securing teleprompter communication.
Okay. So there is a motion to, um, accept items number. Eight through 17, and remove, uh, item number 18 to the regular agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Is, is, uh, is Gerlach still on? Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's aye, I'm here.
Okay, just checking. You'd been real quiet.
I'm here.
Okay. So, uh, item number 18?
Just re, um, just remove it from the agenda at this point, and we'll put it on the agenda in the future.
Okay.
It could be a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 18 from the present agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove item 18 from the agenda and to be, placed in a future agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. Next item, our approvals and authorizations. Number 19 is a possible action to reject the right-of-way dedication. Mr. Servantes.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. There was some dedication or right-of-way that took place some time ago on the west side of Los, Los Eventos, a quarter mile south of Mile 3 Road. Uh, there's a document that got recorded, but the city never accepted the dedication, and the city has no interest in, in getting, uh, this land, so we, we're asking the council to officially reject this dedication so that the property owners can take over that land.
Okay, are there any questions or motion? Discussion?
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve, uh, item number 19 to reject the right-of-way dedication by, uh, the Ramos family. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item is, uh, receipt of April to May 2025 unaudited financial statements.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Council. Before you have the receipts of the unaudited financial statements for the month of April and May, uh, those funds pertain to the general fund, the utility fund, and the other enterprise funds of sanitation, golf, and event center. If you just take a minute or two to review them, and if you have any questions, by all means, we're, I'm here to address them.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of, uh, acknowledging the receipt of April to May 2025 unaudited financial statements, um, say yes. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Next item pertains to the presentation of April 2025 through May 2025 budget to actual report. This is for presentation only.
Okay. Are there any questions in reference to the presentation? There being none, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Item number 22.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item number 22, award bid for the construction of the installation of an elevator for the CDBG building at 1301 East 8th Street to RDZ Group in the amount of $380,000 with respective budget amendment. We accepted an open four bids with, bids for the construction and installation of the elevator. Staff is recommending awarding bid to RDZ Group in the amount of $380,000, who was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications. The MRA TERS number one will reimburse the city of Mission via reimbursement agreement.
The only thing I'd like to correct that is that we request that the, the TERS, because they didn't, um, budget 300, and I think all they gave us was 250 for the, uh, for the elevator, so, uh, the difference will be asking for the TERS, so whoever makes a motion to request from the TERS to, uh, consider amending their, their budget to increase that from 250 to 380.
So it would be, um, subject to the approval of the, uh, budget amendment by TERS?
Right.
Basically, okay. All right. Is there, are there any questions? Discussion? A motion?
That is correct, Mr. Plata, the building next door.
A little history, I think, how many times did you go out for bids?
This was the third, the third time that we went out for bids, and also, we tried by-borne, and that didn't work either, and so.
So I think.
Finally, we got, um, a low, a, a bid lower than 400,000. The first two times, it was 450, the lowest bidder.
This is for the elevator, right?
This is for the elevator only.
And what's going to be upstairs for the community to have to go up there?
So we currently are doing some remodeling in, in that building, and we're doing it in-house. Uh, we have some plans and layouts that we had proposed, uh, about six months ago. Uh, we wanted to move some of the departments over there because we ran out of space here in City Hall, and we had contemplated to move, uh, media, uh, also, as you all know, CDBG is over there. At the time, we wanted to move also the auditor, which is no longer with us, but, uh, also we wanted to lo, uh, move, uh, civil service and, uh, risk, but now since we combined risk with HR, we're still looking to see what other departments we can accommodate over there.
Mayor, I would like to see if we can take this into executive session. I have some questions. That I would like to discuss with the attorney and with Mr. Bettis.
Okay. All right. All right, so we'll, we'll take it into, into executive session, we'll take a pause on this one, and, uh, we'll continue and bring it back when we go to executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moving on on item number 23, authorization to award bid for the pump repair and maintenance services for the water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants, the pre-treatment plant, and the water distribution division. We accepted an open five-bid responses for the pump repair and maintenance services. Staff recommends awarding bid to JNE Lift Station Services, who was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I want to approve to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to, uh, approve the repair and maintenance services for, uh, water treatment plants. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution in reference to our public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item number 24 is seeking approval of resolution, I'm, I'm sorry, the number? 1991?
Four.
Resolution number 1994, approving substantial amendment for FY 2425 Annual Action Plan for the CDBG program. In accordance with 24 CFR 91.105 and the city's citizen participation plan, the city is allowed to make substantial amendments to consolidated plan and/or actual plan. The substantial amendment for the FY 2425 Annual Action Plan consists of reprogramming $60,783.79 from FY 2324 surplus with CDBG funding for housing assist, from Housing Assistance Program to FY 2425 CDBG General Program Administration and Public Infrastructure Improvement Projects as follows: $40,000 for Public, uh, Public Works Sewer Manhole Improvements, $10,566.11 for the Storm Sewer Improvement Astroland Design Phase One, and $1,002.17 with 68 cents to CDBG Administration. In accordance with the citizen participation plan, the Citizens Advisory Committee made the recommendations for the approval of substantial amendment during the meeting held on June 2nd, 2025. The city solicited comments for a minimum of 30 days as prescribed by the citizen participation plan, and held two public comment, uh, public hearings, uh, with no comments received, Mayor. Staff and City Manager recommend your approval.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1994. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Bettis. Item number 25, consider approval of an amount of $1,859,287.7 of the golf course receivable. golf course receivable as uncollectible, subject to adjustment based on the twenty, the FY twenty twenty-four audit. The golf course fund has an outstanding receivable of approximately three million six hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents owed to the general fund. The newly lighted portion of the golf course is projected to generate approximately three hundred and fifty-eight thousand annually in revenues over its operating expenses. Based on these projections, the city expects to recover one million seven hundred and ninety thousand between fiscal years twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty. The remaining one million eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents is proposed to be recorded under allowance for uncollectible debt. This estimate may be subject to minor adjustments based on the outcome of the city's FY twenty-four audit. For several years, the golf course operations have been supported by funds borrowed from the general fund to cover expenses. To address this, the staff has updated budgeting practices to include regular transfers from the general fund to the golf force, course fund. This new process is designed to minimize further accumulation of debt going forward. If actual collections exceed projections, additional bounce may be used to reduce allowance for uncollectible debt. Staff will also continue to evaluate financial performance each year to determine whether any additional designations of uncollectible amounts may be necessary based on actual outcomes. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
You can read about the estimate, and it's subject to minor adjustment base, but we're going to give the one million eight.
So it'll be one million eight, but as we go through the audit process, you know, there are a lot of transactions that might need to be posted to, to the cash balance, so that's going to change as they, they go through the audit. So, because the audit is, the auditors will ask, you know, hey, you need to include this, you know, you, this transaction was, was not added, right? Those types of things will be influenced by the audit process, so that number might, might fluctuate very, very lightly. There, we don't expect to have any, any substantial changes.
The write-off is not going to change. What might write off is, well, is a difference, yeah, it's a difference, because it's three point six right now. So the, the amount that we're writing off is one million eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's going to be set, because that's what you approved. Now, the amount, that, that three million six forty-nine may, may grow a little bit, or it may shrink a little bit. That's, that's the thing that will change.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
So, for twenty-four, so in other words, that, the year that they are currently auditing, we're going to, we're going to post a million eight fifty-nine?
Yes.
Or we're going to start twenty-five and twenty-six with a million seven nine, correct?
So it'll be for the twenty twenty-four audit, yes, that's correct.
But they were twenty-six.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-five and twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, it will already be adjusted for.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
And twenty-four and twenty-five, we would not have any, we would leave it, it would stay with a million seven nine?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we, we have a million eighty-five on the year for next year.
Yes, that's correct, sure.
So twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to start with a million seven, there's a bound that we should see there, right?
Yes, basically, yes, sir.
Are we very clear?
Yes.
I want to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the adjustment to the base of the FY twenty twenty-four audit as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I was at the golf course on Friday for an amazing golf tournament. They had over thirty-three teams, and then I got a tour by our wonderful director, and I saw a bunch of staff working, and I just feel that I wanted to announce publicly that I, I feel that the future of the golf course is going to be amazing. He said a lot of great things to me about us being first in the Rio Grande Valley to have the renovations that we're going through, and so I really do think that we are going to get winter Texans to come back, and the youth to come, want to come and play at our, at our facilities there. So I just wanted to give a big shout-out to your staff for the hard work and dedication that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Mr. S. I don't believe there's any unfinished business, routine matters. Is any, I have your, any comments? You, no comments?
Well, yes, I do have.
You usually have something to say.
We've got, uh, spare memorial libraries offering to activities for children and teens. Please visit our city website to look for details. The Parks Department, the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation is winding down the regional meet for qualifiers, being able to attend the Games of Texas in College Station on July thirtieth and through Sunday, August the third. So we have the track, regional meet is Wednesday, the sixteenth, and Thursday, the seventeenth, and the eighteenth at PSJ North, and Banmore, not a tournament, will be hosting the site for the swim regional on Friday, the eighteenth, and Saturday, the nineteenth.
Do we have the introduction of an employee possibly?
Who do we hire? No, I don't, oh, David. We hired one of our senior accountants. David, you want to stand up? David has a vast amount of experience in municipal accounting, in the city of Donna and the city of McAllen, and we're very happy to have him part of our, our team here.
Welcome to mission. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Hi, David, welcome aboard. Mayor, I, if I may, I do have a comment. We had a fantastic Fourth of July event, and I want to say thank you to our sponsors and our great city staff. It was wonderful to see so many people out there enjoying the evening into the night, so thank you to everyone that participated, that made that event possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is just, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, I don't have any comments either. We will now go into executive session, so is there a motion? Make a motion. There's a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section five-five-one point zero seven-four and point zero seventy-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Jaycee's item, what number was that?
Mayor, I pulled item number 22.
22, okay.
Do we have a motion to go back to the open session?
I make a motion to come back to open session?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0. So, item number 22.
Yes, Mayor, Council want bid for construction and installation of the elevator for the CDBG building at 1301 East Bay Street to RDZ group in the amount of $380,000 with respective budget amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Jaycee, in this one, Mr. the architect, Mr. Garcia Albrecht.
Charlie Garcia. Yes.
So, he is the most responsible bid.
Correct.
Mayor, there's no questions, I would like to move to approve the most responsible bid, I've recommended my stand, for questioning this one.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second, and if I might just add, what Mike added was that it was subject to the, yeah, approval of TERS for the amendment.
Correct.
Okay, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you.
Okay, and now the items in executive session.
Number three, appoint two council members to visit with the Fire Union Association.
And those members are, will be Beto and Marissa.
I'm going to refer to them.
Second. Motion and a second to appoint Beto Vela and Marissa Gerlach to the negotiations, meeting confer with the Fire Fighters Association, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously. And item number four.
What ordinance number is that?
5675.
5675. Okay.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to proceed with the ordinance to transfer the property to MEDC, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, motion carries, three in favor and one abstention by Mr. Ruben Blut.
That's it.
And there is no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
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 All in favor say bye. 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 Bye.